Thanks for that Jennifer.
A specific question around the assumptions. Given your collective expertise in the field, what would you say are the top three assumptions driving the cost of the project?
So I would say the the top three costs that's driving the project is definitely, you know, construction costs, the budget, the operating expenses that Calster will be, you know, paying once they occupy owning and occupying the building as well as the leasing rates of in the leasing scenario of the third-party building that will be available to lease.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks Dana.
Absolutely. Lynn?
Thank you. Lisa, I wanted to thank you and your team for all the work you've been doing over the past several years on this, and I know that there's been a lot of heavy lifting and lots of different options to be weighed. And so I think, you know, to Nora's question about the changing nature of work, that's something that the controller has been focused on as well over the past couple of years of looking at this. And I understand that a new building wouldn't be projected to be occupied or this Calsters wouldn't need more than 50% to lease this building for the first 20 years or so. And so she would really like to see an option where potentially Calsters leases the space that you need for the next 10 years and then comes back and looks at a longer-term option. And I think, you know, with that request, along with really looking at and evaluating the bond option and how that could be a very interesting option to look like, we wouldn't want to rush things if you feel that November is too soon to really pull this all together and along with the benchmarking that Paul has asked, we would prefer to have a full package and then we vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. So you said 10 years?
So Lisa, seems that we are asking for more information?
How comfortable are you within the timeline that we've already set? I mean, how are you feeling about November?
Well, I'm not sure. And I'll be honest, and the reason being is because I think that we're going to have to procure a financial advisor for the bond financing issue. And so that's probably going to take some time. And it sounds like there's a couple of other scenarios now that you want you want staff to bring back, so.
So I think at minimum for November, I just had it, I lost it. If we're going to need more time, if you're going to need more time, and it's sounding like the board is really feeling like we're going to need more time, particularly as we add more and more to your plate. Jack was saying earlier that we have to really look at the monies we have now devoted to that. So I'm thinking that in November, at the very least, we need to know what that is and if we have to extend any of those contracts, if it's going to cost us any more money.
Right, definitely. We'll have to we'll have to bring back in November the implications of delaying a decision because we do, like like Jack mentioned, we are very close to being out of the funds that were allocated for us to do this design exercise so that we could provide you these scenarios.
And so you'll have that information for us in November for sure. And then a timeline that you think would be realistic for the board to be able to absorb everything that we need to.
Yeah, it could be that we do get the bond financing information that we need and it's ready to provide to the board in November. I think that what I'm hearing is that that could be a lot of information to take in for all of you to make a decision at that very meeting, so.
Also throwing in another scenario too, so. Alrighty. Jacqueline?
Thanks Dana. Thank you Lisa for all of for taking all this in, and I know that we're hitting you with a lot right now too and your team, and everyone's done such a great job in their presentations. I wanted to circle back to two topics. One was Paul had mentioned about the benchmarking and what he sort of thought was missing. That's also a concern that I have. I, you know, we at Department of Finance have a capital outlay unit, and I've asked them to look into to those same benchmarks that you're asking for Paul, as well as engaging Department of General Services. So I'm happy to share information with staff as well if that's in any way helpful or helpful to your timeline, because I've already asked them for my own benefit and for my own kind of fiduciary duty, making sure that I'm up on what I need to know going into this decision. So if there's other ways that you think that we can be helpful or that I can help engage other state agencies who who may be able to provide some data, please do let me know.
Thank you, that would be very helpful.
And then the second piece was about the scenario that Lynn just asked for. So as part of my preparation, and I wasn't here in 2016 when I know that there was sort of the decision to appropriate the design money and to set up the fund for the 181 million, but I went back to that tape because I wanted to understand kind of what the discussion had been and what the ask had been. And what I heard was that at that time, what was asked of staff was everything that you presented, but that there would be some sort of separate pot of money to fund outside of this. A an analysis of some shorter-term lease options, specifically what would be backup and short-term alternatives for space needs. And so was that information presented at some other time, or is that is Lynn asking essentially for the information that they asked for in 2016?
I think at that, I think what that short-term solution was is is the time that we needed to house staff until a decision was made.
Oh, I see.
So that was what it was, that was what was about.
It was ultra-short term.
It was ultra-short term. It was like interim space.
I had interpreted it more along the lines of what she was asking for right now.
No, that was different.
Because I would also like to see kind of what does it look like if we weren't ready to move on a building decision to lease and, you know, who would be moved or what that expansion looked like as this sort of alternative to building now? Because what I'm hearing is sort of building now, buying now, I mean, the relative now, however long it takes us to do these things, or leasing for 30 years as opposed to leasing for some amount of time while we either found the perfect building or figured out what are all of our options were.
When we first presented in July of 2016, we did present a scenario that included an option of leasing for a period and then building, and it was significantly higher. We can resurrect that analysis to include in, you know, our current presentation as well.
And it wasn't an alternative that the board asked us to bring forward?
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay. So the pleasure of the board, is that something, well Lynn's already asking for it, so we've got it, we've got it covered.
Yeah, I think it, I think it makes sense what she's asking for. I'd like to see that as well.
But we do some ultra-short term contingencies, but they're not pretty, but depending upon where we would end up, we have those, we had, we have to do some thinking about that when people need offices, so.
Because regardless of where we go, we already know we're going to be out of room and have to put people somewhere.
Yeah, this is about.
No matter what we choose.
Yeah.
In meeting needs of the organization.
It really, it really revolves around the the problem statement, which is, you know, and we're, we're going to try our best to squeeze as long as we can. I mean, I think that we're committed to do that, but we'll have to really look at any delay in decision and what that means from a space perspective.
Yeah, ideally, we'd like to save the money and not not have a short-term additional cost on top of everything else, so that was the idea behind it.
Harry?
Punch slides to go.
I know. Harry?
Oh no, I'm sorry Dana.
You're good?
Yep.
Paul?
Um, I'm.
If we're continuing to hear more.
Oh yeah, we've got, we've still got, we're only on 25 and.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. This is the last page of the financial analysis here, and I want to just kind of touch on it lightly. We spoke to most of it and just want to focusing on the highlights here. Again, you know, total initial cost from a expansion standpoint, 300 million versus 366 million in the acquisition versus 176 million in the lease scenario. Now by achieving that, you do have the offset of the potential lease income from a third-party and also parking income that's considered for the expansion as well as the acquisition scenario. Of course, you know, in the lease scenario, we only have rent expenses, operating expenses, no additional subsidies from any leasing any other spaces to a third-party. So this concludes the qualitative section of the analysis, and I wanted to hand it over to Aaron for the qualitative section.
Thank you Jennifer. All right, so we are going to go into the qualitative approach and assumptions, and some of this you have seen before, so if there's any particular questions you have, feel free to ask. So the driver.
Because of our time constraints? And we do have someone that has another job outside of where we are, waiting to speak? Instead of, let's, I'm going to ask the board to try to hold their questions.
Sure. And I will try to be as brief as.
And Aaron, would it be appropriate now for Aaron to speak, so we're not holding him for another?
Sure. Definitely.
I'm sorry, Aaron.
So we can forward the slides.
Hold on. He's silent.
And I'll leave that up to you, Aaron. I mean, if you want to hear the rest of the presentation and then speak, it's up to you.
You know, I am okay on time. I made sure this is really important to us, so if you'd like to hear the rest of it, then I don't mind waiting.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate it.
That's the case, I'm going to go backwards.
Thanks.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, well, I will try not to be too repetitive from the last board meeting. So overall, you know, why do we need a qualitative analysis? This is something that we get asked all the time. We typically, when we are undergoing a thorough financial analysis for any of our clients in these types of situations, we do pair it with a qualitative analysis so we can really understand the cost-benefit of our decision-making. So with this particular situation, you know, the considerations that drive the need to look at more qualitative factors are aspects that support or threaten the operational viability of Calsters. So the order of events there is really thinking about how the workplace changes, what is available to the current workforce and members and beneficiaries, how does that change in each scenario? And then how does that ultimately impact the productivity of the employee? And then the success and operations of Calsters, which in the end is very influential and impactful on the members and beneficiaries. So that's sort of the order of events, the way we undertake this analysis. So in particular here, what I just want to highlight quickly is some of the considerations, workplace trends, as Nora brought up, is a major consideration in the qualitative analysis. So thinking about what has happened in the workplace over time, what we predict over time, how the workplace organization has changed, whether that's open office from a cubicle arrangement, you know, thinking about how you have collaboration space, how you're integrating telecommuting, et cetera. And when we think about that, ultimately, we're thinking about how that affects Calsters' ability to recruit and retain talent, which ultimately then drives forward to how are the members and beneficiaries affected by the productivity of the workforce within Calsters and the successful operations of Calsters? And so then that kind of brings us to things like the competitor bucket here, the membership and beneficiary commitment, and the organizational culture of Calsters. You know, we want to look at Calsters' opportunity in their future office-based occupancy as how it differentiates and sets the organization apart from its competitors, so it can attract and retain the best talent out there to go forward, help the fund perform at the highest level, and in essence, benefit the membership and beneficiaries. So here's a slide that kind of outlines a bunch of different impacts of, you know, looking at the qualitative aspect and kind of turning it into a little bit of a quantitative result. So for example, more than half of workers report that access to shared spaces actually help engagement. And from our perspective, we want Calsters' workforce to connect with the organization's mission and membership so that they can feel engaged with the company, with the organization, and with the mission and objectives to therefore benefit the members. And then likewise, the connection with coworkers also increases engagement by 150% compared to workers without this option. And I also think one that stood out to me was that 94% of companies report that agility and collaboration, which you find in an open workspace atmosphere, are critical to the success of an organization. And I'll just skip over that while the details. So these are the kind of four buckets that we grouped the impact of qualitative analysis into: operational requirements, environment and experience, workplace flexibility and purpose, and risk. So first, when we're looking at organizational requirements, we're looking at strategies that support the business and day-to-day operations, the high-quality member beneficiary and customer service, we want that maintained, the benchmark that Calsters is already set. And we want to know that whatever strategy Calsters goes forward with, that really supports the business and enables the key functionality and adjacencies that the current tower provides. And so going forward, what I'm going to do here is kind of back up each bucket, if you will, with some research and analysis that has both come from JLL internally as well as from external resources. So operational requirements and public institutions. JLL has a public institutions group that puts out a report, and they found, and this is an annual report, and they found, you know, that there's eight really strong ways that public and quasi-public institutions can increase their CRE performance. And then number four was prioritizing real estate user satisfaction and communication. And I thought this particularly resonated with Calsters because you're talking about not only the workforce, but also the members and beneficiaries that come through this space. And focusing on those constituents and those visitors, workforce, and their connection with the office environment and how they view the space and feel comfort in that space is pretty critical. And so when we look at all the scenarios, the leasing, the acquisition, the HQ expansion, we're keeping this in mind. And then moving ahead, so just for clarity, the distributed work programs, that is also another way of saying open office agility workspace, so there's a lot of different terminology for it. So for this slide, what we're looking at is how you ultimately could actually see the benefit of being in that kind of open office plan and allowing for these critical adjacencies, allowing for collaboration. And a lot of what this comes from is the reduction in square footage that is needed. So that reduction in square footage, in this example, this is just an example, this is not reflective of Calsters' strategy, but you're going from a need of 100,000 square feet to 67,000. And what that ultimately does is it reduces your construction costs, it reduces your OpEx costs over time, and then, you know, in this example, you're reducing your annual one-year costs by $8 million. So there is a financial ramification of going into these more collaborative atmospheres and being in buildings that can allow for that. You know, if we're thinking about the HQ expansion versus an acquisition or a lease, if you're acquiring an existing building or leasing space in an existing building, you can't always ensure that those spaces will allow for the exact layout that is fitting to your organization. And so this slide here, operational requirements, innovation and decision-making, I think that this is an interesting slide, and it's basically the top benefits as identified by Knoll, who's a workplace and architectural firm. What are the biggest beneficiaries in terms of operational requirements and efficiencies that are found through offering collaborative space in an open office environment? So you're fostering innovation, that's the biggest one. And especially with an organization like Calsters, you want to make sure that you're ahead of the game and ahead of the curve, and being a leading practice organization in terms of making sure that your investments are returning the types of returns that your members and beneficiaries desire. You're also improving productivity, you're speeding up decision-making, supporting the business process and improving communication. And I think speeding up the decision-making is also an important thing to think about when you're considering whether you're staying, whether you're doing an HQ expansion where you have that campus synergy versus looking at an acquisition opportunity or a leasing scenario that might include buildings that are actually off-campus. All right, so we will move on to environment and experience. And so this is, again, kind of what we're talking about in terms of this open workspace environment, rather than the operational impact, what is the first impact on how employees view this and how it is perceived by employees and what it enables them to do. So the environment, generally, we want an environment that strengthens the corporate brand and culture, and this is particularly important to Calsters, especially in light of what their baseline is, what where we sit today. You also want a work environment that is going to attract and retain talent. As I've heard so many times throughout this engagement is the tenure that the Calsters' workforce has. I mean, it's incredibly impressive, and you don't see that kind of tenure today across the board. And so I think that it says something to Calsters' commitment to its workforce and the members and beneficiaries, how long the workforce here does stay. And then we look at things such as, you know, just maintaining that those high-quality infrastructure pieces and amenities that are already available here in the tower, how do those get replicated in other scenarios? And then bringing us to things like environment and wellness, those are prioritized. And then ultimately, too, thinking about the member impact, you know, you have, you have members coming in and out of this building all the time, how do you ease any impact or disruption on them, whether that be constructing an office, an HQ expansion, is that construction going to impact them? Or if any of those customer service entities are going to be moved to another location? These are the types of things we're thinking about here. So as you're probably aware, the state of California is incredibly progressive in terms of environmental and sustainability mandates. I live in Connecticut, and it's a very different story there. So but regardless, you know, the majority of organizations that we've seen really prioritize this connection and put high value and recognize the connection with the workplace and the success of the organization when they think about things in terms of environmental and sustainability goals. So this is, this was a really big consideration in how we moved forward with our qualitative assessment of each option. And then moving into wellness and amenities, thinking about the experience, and this goes just beyond, you know, beyond just employees enjoying the workspace, but, you know, thinking about how the amenities available promote productivity, collaboration, and then how that in the end drives Calsters' investment performance and benefits the members and beneficiaries of Calsters. And so just, you know, an interesting, you know, quantitative stat to put out there according to Aon, investment in health and wellness programs such as a gym or such as gym classes returns $3 to $6 for every dollar spent, and that return is based on the increase in productivity and any operational results thereafter. And then everybody likes good food. So not only does, you know, providing a cafe on-site as Calsters already does with nutritious food is that good for, you know, it's good for wellness and health, but it also, again, brings this idea of offering a space for collaboration. And what I think is particularly important about Calsters in the current tower is that that cafe represents so much than more than just servicing Calsters and its workforce, it brings in the community. And it, you know, when your members come in, they, you know, there's that opportunity, they get to see the workforce in action. I mean, I think that's a pretty neat thing to have your members come in and be able to see the people who are really working for their future, to be able to sit and talk and think about ideas and be innovative. You know, I think that it's, you know, it's considered a benefit and it's an amenity, but it does lead to better decision-making and innovation within the workplace. And then lastly, I just really, I really like this quote because I think for Calsters where the culture and the organization's mission is so important, this is a quote from the Gensler Design Director, "At its core, branding workplaces is a process of taking the characteristics that make a company great and expressing those characteristics through motive experiences that ultimately enhance learning, productivity, and the overall workplace experience for employees and clients." And again, your clients at Calsters are the members. And, you know, being able to showcase a, you know, building that really emits Calsters' culture and what they're doing for their members is really important here. And again, just driving that connectivity between the employees, being able to see who they're working for and who they're striving to help in the future is really critical. And then workplace flexibility and purpose, and this ties back a little more to operational requirements and what Calsters needs in terms of its space requirements to be productive and enable a good working environment. And this will also speak a little bit to what Nora brought up previously as well. So thinking about a strategy that provides the appropriate mix of space types to support different work functions, and then accommodates workplace, workspace flexibility for changes in business function and relocation of business units over time. And lastly, also enables this headcount growth opportunity, which is really the challenge here that we're trying to solve. This is a great chart to look at, I think. This is from our workplace strategy team at JLL, and it outlines the types of office organizations that we see from our clients, from the cellular space, which is really more your cubicle office environment to full mobility, where you have complete unassigned desks and workstations. So most organizations sit between open plan and activity-based open plan. Calsters is actually more somewhere between activity-based open plan and hybrid mobility. And from going left to right, thinking about benchmarking, most organizations, again, are in that open plan area, and the more to the right you are, the more progressive you are. And so what that really communicates is Calsters' willingness and ability to strive towards being efficient in their workspace and really getting to a place in their organization where they are using their real estate responsibly, and thinking about what the best organization is in terms of the workspace that is best for achieving their their mission and objectives. And another, this is a leading practice benchmarking slide, where we're looking at both vacancy rate and then density, which is your square footage per seat. So Calster actually, Calster sits at a 10% vacancy rate now, which is considered progressive in where we see most of our clients, traditional is up around 25%. You know, we see some very, very progressive organizations at 5%, but that's very rare, and it often intersects with a completely unassigned work environment where you have no offices, very little privacy. And then in terms of square footage per seat, Calsters is currently at 200, moving towards that 150, which again is very, considered very progressive. Most organizations right now, on average, sit around probably 175. And then this is a slide around workplace flexibility and purpose and how you measure that success. So, you know, how do we measure the benefit of taking these strides in being more space-efficient and increasing density and reducing vacancy? You know, the one that really jumps out at me the most is this idea of employee satisfaction and, you know, being able to increase that measure, also increasing retention and attraction. And ultimately, what that does, it it benefits your members because you're keeping the same workforce intact, you're not spending as many dollars retraining people or training new people, you're not spending as many dollars recruiting. And then on the real estate side, in terms of occupancy dollars, you know, you're, you're thinking about occupying less space, so that's going to create savings in real estate expenditures over time. And then lastly, the last category we looked at in terms of qualitative impact in each scenario are risks. So the degree of disruption to ongoing internal business operations, the speed of implementation, how quickly each scenario can be implemented, and then the ability of each strategy to accommodate any downsizing or contraction in the business that may be expected or unexpected. And then the last one was thinking about the impact of outside or external disruption in the strategy. So when we are talking about in the HQ expansion, leasing that excess space that Calsters not already in, or in a leasing scenario, being a co-tenant in a building, what are the risks of that?
So before we get into the quantitative analysis that they've done about all these, do we have any questions about what Aaron's just presented to us? All right, Aaron?
All right. So the following slides are extremely detailed and very, very wordy, so I am not going to go, I'm not reading them through, I'm just going to pull out a couple bullets that I think are particularly important. So for each scenario, for the HQ expansion, for the acquisition, and for the leasing scenario, what we did is within each of those buckets, we looked at any benefits or risks within each situation. So for the HQ expansion, when we looked at operation- So for the HQ expansion, when we looked at operational requirements, some of the things that stood out as really strong benefits here are, again, the challenge that we are accommodating that headcount and growth forecast fully, that is baked into the square footage that is being expanded. It also is space that is built out to the business objectives and mission. So we know that the space that is being built will check those boxes for Calstor's and allow them to be operationally efficient and maintain the current status quo that the Tower One has offered the employees. And with that, the space reflects the required synergies and operational adjacencies that the organization requires. And then the other, another factor that we'll see that in the leasing and acquisition scenarios is that it doesn't require the same kind of replication of some headcount, such as IT or mailroom personnel that might be needed in the leasing and acquisition scenarios. For environment and experience, a lot of it ties back to that you're in the same campus environment as the existing tower, so a lot of that isn't changed, it's pretty much status quo, so we consider these all benefits. The existing brand and culture is maintained, you have site synergy with the existing headquarters, your member impact is minimal, you have ease of access maintained by that same site strategy, and the strategy maintains that same level of high-quality infrastructure and amenities that are already available. Some of the cons we see here are that the current headquarters expansion proposes a lower parking ratio than is available at some leasing options on the market currently. And then outside amenity space access, not considering what's available within the site, but outside amenities are more limited in this area than compared to a downtown acquisition or leasing scenario. For workplace flexibility and purpose, I think, you know, the, one of the big things that stuck out at me is that the strategy supports and provides the appropriate mix of space types to support the different work functions present for Calstor's, and it accommodates the workplace workspace flexibility for changes in business function and relocation of business units due to that ability to build out specifically to Calstor's needs. And it also enables that headcount growth opportunity with less disruption. In terms of the risks, you know, disruption is a big one. Disruption to ongoing business operation is mitigated by the ability to retain operations in the current HQ until that expansion space is completed, and future disruption is mitigated by retaining operations on one campus site. Some of the bigger risks that we identified are, you know, the disruption to parking and general access for both the workforce and the members during the construction process, that's that's going to be pretty influential. Outside disruption is also possible when leasing the, when leasing to a third party in the existing office tower space, the need to look at security measures, the need to make sure that only certain spaces are going to be available to those other tenants, these are all things that we looked at. And then we also considered that outside disruption is increased from the, both the existing and new cafes available and the retail portion available to outside patrons. So moving into the acquisition, and so again, the acquisition and leasing scenarios, a lot of the positive and negative, the strengths and weaknesses that we've identified here are not specific to, not necessarily specific to the options that are available today. Many of these pros and cons are applicable regardless of where you're actually locating, as long as we're thinking in this metro area. So in terms of operational requirements, some of the benefits for the acquisition are that, you know, you're still maintaining some of the critical adjacencies that you need at the existing headquarters. And then in the acquisition, you're still building, you're still able to build out to a certain extent to business objectives and mission, you have more control because you're owning, so you have more ability to custom tailor the space to operational requirements. And then again, yes, so the, even though the existing corn shell is not specifically and explicitly built to Calstor's specifications, the interior can be. Risks here are some separation of lower priority adjacencies with two separate locations and some operational change influenced by that as well, and then the need to replicate some critical headcount positions such as IT or mailroom, things like that. In terms of environment and experience, some of the benefits of being in an acquisition scenario, you're offered the opportunity to emulate that corporate brand and culture similar to the existing HQ in build-out and superficial changes to the core. You're also maintaining your LEED certification, as that is across the board a mandate. And then the downtown and outside amenity access is more favorable in downtown Sacramento than compared to West Sacramento. Some of the risks here are talent and attraction and retention challenged by a potentially inferior environment and interior amenities compared to the existing headquarters, and also likely the need to utilize off-site parking possibly at an additional cost. In the alternatives that we looked at, no, none of the facilities have a gym on site in avail, in alternatives available today. And that really speaks to this idea of parity when we're looking at the acquisition or the leasing scenario and what options are out there. We're thinking a lot about what the workforce and membership have here versus what they would have somewhere else. Workplace flexibility and purpose, some of the pros here are an acquisition strategy would still support the utilization and collaboration needs that Calstor's has been able to embody in the current headquarters. The strategy would provide an appropriate mix of space types. Cons in this area are the accommodation of headcount growth. Again, this this depends on what is available on the market at the time, and is also impacted by the ability to restack tenants within the building, accommodate exits, whether that means, you know, having a tenant move out at lease expiration or potentially buying them out early. These are all things that would impact and be really more risks to the scenario. And then in terms of overall risks for an acquisition scenario, in terms of disruption to ongoing businesses, that's pretty mitigated by the, again, the same thing, the ability to retain operations within the current headquarters until the acquisitions is completed. The speed of implementation is uncertain, it depends on the purchase process, contractors and space delivery. And then in more on the like con side, business disruption is present in the eventual move, significant move of current units and headcount to a new location. You have less control than in a development process in terms of the initial acquisition timing and execution. You have outside disruption from co-tenants already occupying space in the acquisition site, and then potential disruption from future co-tenancy when Calstor's is not yet occupying the full building. And lastly, the lease scenario. So in terms of operational requirements, the biggest con here to operational requirements is that you're in another location and you generally have a lack of control of the building. So while your critical adjacencies are maintained at the current headquarters, the possibility of needing to be in two or even more locations over time will have a big impact on operational efficiencies because you won't be able to maintain those same adjacencies that you would be able to maintain in an acquisition scenario, for example. You'll also need some general replication of critical positions, as we discussed. In terms of existing corn shell, those aren't, you know, it's not going to be built out to Calstor's specifications, and even the interior of the the building is going to be partially limited by that lack of control. Calstor's won't be the landlord, so they can't ultimately make those decisions and calls. In terms of environment and experience, again, most of the buildings within downtown Sacramento, Sacramento do have LEED certification. Outside amenity access we see is more favorable. On the con side, talent, attraction, and retention is challenged by that idea that a leasing scenario could be potentially inferior in terms of the amenities available compared to HQ expansion or at another, at another site. There's also a challenge to emulate that corporate brand and culture similar to what Calstor's already has at Tower One. And then looking at things like net zero energy or zero net energy, depending on how you term it, requires a building retrofit and landlord approval if that is even feasible based on the structure of the building. Moving into workplace flexibility and purpose, there's really not a whole lot of benefit in a leasing scenario here. There's some space flexibility and build-out, but again, it really depends on availability and floor plates, it's not built out to Calstor's specifications, so it's not necessarily move-in ready or turnkey. And then the impact on utilization and collaboration for Calstor's workforce is very uncertain because of that. Space types are limited, again, to availability and the confines of the existing building, and there's limited flexibility to accommodate changing business objectives, operational shifts, and headcount growth or contraction over the near to medium term. The idea being that if there is any disruption in the headcounts that have been forecasted, the ability to get out of a lease is very difficult, or lease new space is also very difficult and increases the need to go to even more locations. And then the potential to accommodate workspace flexibility is also subject to landlord willingness and ability of existing tenant restacks and exits. Risks overall, disruption to ongoing business operations are not seen as severe, mitigated by the ability, again, to retain those operations in the current headquarters until lease and move-in is completed. We have, we do have business disruption present in the move of current units and headcount to a new location, so as we need more space, that constant moving, if that, you know, from location one, then leasing another location, that's a lot of movement and business disruption during that period. There's limited downsizing potential, as we touched on earlier, in terms of the headcount. It's also, you know, it's subject to landlord approval, it's not just something you can change over time. In an acquisition scenario, for example, if Calstor's didn't end up needing as much space as they thought, they'd have the ability to lease that space to a third party. And then again, the outside disruption from co-tenants already occupying space and their clients is a concern here. So we're going to get into the qualitative scorecard here. What this does, it provides a relative comparison to Calstor's baseline, which is where we sit today, Tower One, and how each scenario compares in terms of that baseline. So because the HQ expansion is really built out to Calstor's specifications and really retains that parity with the existing status quo, the qualitative scorecard is going to show a really high result. But we did look at the alternatives, the acquisition and leasing scenarios objectively in this respect, which pieces of those scenarios, how did they perform relative to the existing Tower One? I'll give you a minute to look through this, and you'll see that each category, the operational requirements, environments, experience, workplace flexibility and risks are all weighted, and then within that, each component weighted.
And Erin, we actually had this in our, our board book?
Great.
So we probably don't have to wait too long.
Okay. So yeah, that's fine. So the HQ expansion scores the highest at 4.6, the acquisition follows at 3.1, and the leasing alternative comes in lowest at 2.3. And then the next step here is, once we have those qualitative scores, how we integrate that with the quantitative, because we are not obviously just making our decision based on the qualitative or based on the quantitative, how do we look at this together? So on this graph, we're looking at the comparison of that qualitative criteria versus the NPV. And you can see that the HQ expansion falls in that middle range with, towards the higher end of the cost spectrum, but also a high qualitative value. The acquisition has the highest cost and a somewhat lower qualitative value, the leasing is obviously the lowest cost, but also the lowest qualitative value. And then finally, in terms of that integration, we weigh in the financials on top of those qualitative measures. So the relative weighting of the qualitative measures is the same as the first chart, but we put in financials with a 50% weighting, looking at the MPV and the average run rate over time. And five is most favorable, one least favorable. The HQ expansion comes in top at 3.7, followed by the leasing alternative at three, and then the acquisition scenario at 2.4. So the driver here, what evened out the scores is really that financial component.
Just a quick question, Erin. Weeded the qualitative and the quantitative equally in your model?
Fifty-fifty.
It's fifty-fifty.
Correct.
To get to the, I'm just trying, just want to make sure that I heard that right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. And that's it from me.
Thank you. So I know.
Welcome to Calstor's.
Thank you, Chair and Board members. I know at this point you may be thinking more about lunch than what I'm going to say. So I will, okay, thanks. I will be as brief as I can, but first, just wanted to just introduce myself. I started as a city manager in West Sacramento just in July, but I've been with the city for almost 14 years. So I was here, actually worked, I had a small hand on the original Rayleigh's Landing Development Agreement that led to this, this building that actually approved both, both buildings. I was here when it opened, and I've been here since to see the impact on the riverfront and the community, and I can speak on behalf of everyone at the city. This is really our most important project on the riverfront that has happened yet, and that's, that's saying a lot, because with Rayleigh Field and everything else that's happened, the impact of Calstor's has been tremendous. So I'm going to touch on that. But also, I just wanted, on a personal note, mention that my, my dad taught public high school for 36 years, so he's in, in California, in the Bay Area, so he's a proud Calstor's member. Just also wanted to briefly acknowledge Board Member Yamamoto for her service in West Sacramento, teaching at our schools. So just briefly, the topics I'm going to cover today, the main point, again, is the importance of both the existing building, but also the expansion project on, on West Sacramento. I'm also going to give you some updates on some of the things we've been doing along the riverfront that tie into your, your investment plans. You'll see, hopefully, through this presentation, that we've been really doubling and tripling down on the investment that Calstor's started with, with the first building, and, and around the building, we've been working with partners and investing public and leveraging private funds to bring about a tremendous change in, in that environment as well. I'm also going to get into a little bit about what we're doing in terms of our education programs with the city. We have a little bit of unique, uniqueness about us in that we run a preschool and childcare facility. We also have what's called the West Sacramento Home Run Program, which is sort of a multi-dimensional education workforce development program, so I'll, I'll touch on that as well. So in terms of what the first building meant to the city, it, it should be, you know, fairly obvious that you're, you're our biggest office tenant here, but immediately when the building opened, we had a 5% increase in employment throughout the city. We have a lot of jobs, we have 25,000 jobs in West Sacramento. But what's more important about that is the quality of those jobs. I think by the numbers, you're our second biggest employer, but no offense to the, the US Postal Service, but the types of jobs at Calstor's and, and the, the type of employment that you, you've brought to our city is, is bar none, very important to the city overall, but especially to the riverfront, the environment we're trying to create. And also is a justification for all of that investment that I mentioned. And we've been, if you just go back to the point of where the Calstor's building was built, go to the south in the Bridge District and also look around in this neighborhood. I know a lot of it is actually underground, so you can't really appreciate the level of investment, but it, it has been a, a huge amount of public investment and private investment into transforming what used to be kind of an industrial riverfront to what, what is becoming a very vibrant urban area. And so those areas in, in West Sacramento, the colors are a little off here, but, but the Bridge District to the south, and you're sitting here in the Washington District, are our two main riverfront areas. Like I mentioned, over the course of the last 10 years, we've put over $80 million of public investment in those areas. That's leveraging state grants. Uh, that's leveraging state grants. We, we were a recipient of one of the Prop one C, uh, infill infrastructure grants in the Bridge District. That was a sixty million dollar project, uh, all around Rayleigh Field and all the new housing that you see down there now. And then most recently in the Washington District, you can see the construction right out your back door here. Uh, there's about a twenty million dollar infrastructure project going in to replace sidewalks, utilities, really create the capacity that the area can accommodate with, uh, infill housing, uh, more office development, hotels, you name it. Uh, we're, we're trying to make it possible here. So, but it, just in that short period of time, in ten years, we've added over a thousand new housing units in, in the city. Uh, that may not seem like a huge number, but just in terms of the urban core, the context of the urban core, uh, you know, Sacramento rightly so is trying to add housing into the downtown core to the tune of about ten thousand units. And we often joke with them that, hey, you should just count some of ours and, and you're already ten percent on your way. Uh, but we've also, because of that, added a lot more amenities, uh, mainly restaurants, uh, not, I know, I know we can always use more and, and I, I may be biased, but, uh, and I, I do appreciate the comment earlier about the amenity package you have in downtown. But personally, I'd rather look out a window and see a beautiful river than a freeway. Um, and, and we are adding those amenities in, in the city, uh, to match what you have in downtown. It's going to take some time, but I think the, the important piece is that the city is right there with you in, in matching the investment and getting to that outcome we all want. So also just a couple of other anecdotes here, the Rayleigh's Headquarters, they recently went through a major remodel. Um, you're probably aware of that, just, uh, seeing, uh, what happened over there. But, uh, our other corporate headquarters, they're, they're, uh, I, I think sort of underappreciated in the region. They are one of the only, you know, private, uh, company headquarters that is in the downtown core. And they made a major reinvestment both in that property, but also they're looking to develop some of the property they still own around, uh, this area as well. And then, um, I'll get into some of the mobility projects the city's been working on, but you've probably seen the jump bikes, the orange bikes that are everywhere now, very popular. Uh, what you hopefully know about is, is of, of the, the shuttle that we have now, the Via Service. Uh, it operates only within West Sacramento, but I know you have a lot of employees that live in West Sacramento. So, uh, hopefully, uh, they're taking advantage of that shuttle, which provides a cheaper alternative to Uber or Lyft, um, shared ride service on demand that gets from point A to point B within West Sacramento. So th- these are just some photos of, of recently completed housing projects. The ones on the left are in the Bridge District. Uh, we have the Park Moderns Project surrounded by the park, uh, the Garden Park. Uh, a lot of multifamily rental housing has been popping up down there, um, really adding critical mass to that area that will eventually support the retail and, uh, additional development. Over in the Washington neighborhood, we've actually seen a quite a, a, a bit of rise in, in, uh, for sale, uh, market rate housing, which is a good thing to have, uh, homeowners be in this neighborhood and, uh, and, and really build a community around it too. Uh, but that's not to say we also are investing in affordable housing. So of all that, a thousand new housing units, about fifteen percent of it that we built so far in the Bridge District has been affordable. So, uh, two projects, uh, just down the street, uh, we're really proud, proud of both of them. Um, that's, that's a signal of more to come, so we balance workforce housing with, uh, market rate housing as we grow. Sorry again for the colors, it, it was white, but, uh, but, but amenities and art have also been a central focus of everything we're doing. Uh, you probably, you, you definitely know about the barn. You may not know everything about it, um, probably the, the most questions we get. But the barn is actually about to reopen as a full-service restaurant. Drake's Brewing Company is going to be opening a, a restaurant, um, uh, tap room. Uh, but more so, it's a, it's an open space, uh, amenity for, uh, you know, people with families, people with dogs. It, it's all welcome there. There's a lot of, uh, investment they put into the site. And then also just up the street on Third Street, uh, you, you've probably noticed there's been quite a few new restaurants, uh, opening up there. Um, the city is really focusing its investment on streetscape and making those sites, uh, that currently are vacant, come to life and, and expect to see more of the same there. Um, also within the next, I'd say, two years, um, we're expecting to add about five hundred new for, uh, uh, market rate, uh, units in the Bridge District and in Washington. Some photos, uh, right here, the one in the middle there, um, is actually at three oh one D Street, just right across the railroad tracks from here. There's a building that was, was demolished and now it's going to be fifty apartment units. So the idea is the more housing we add, the more employment we add, which is where Calsters obviously fits in. It's only going to drive that demand for, for more retail, more, uh, restaurants and, and more housing. And so, uh, we're, uh, planning to leverage that with mobility improvements that will better connect the riverfront and more importantly, better connect us with downtown Sacramento. Because we understand that everything that happens in downtown Sacramento is, in a way, actually means more to us than it means to Sacramento because of our proximity, uh, but some of the challenges we have are about better connecting our two cities so that, uh, even though it's right across the river, sometimes it feels like it's, it's on another planet. Um, not for me because I, I live here, but, but that's kind of the, the perception that's out there, that it's, as close as it is, it's still hard to get to. So front and center is the streetcar project. The streetcar project you've probably been following, um, it's, it's very far along compared to where it was when this building was built. Um, we're, we're right there, uh, uh, about to get our, uh, our full funding, funding grant agreement from the federal government, uh, putting together the final pieces of the financial puzzle. Uh, the project should be bid out by the end of the year and we'll know from then, uh, the construction schedule. But the route, uh, you can see there's a stop right in front of Rayleigh Field, so that's the closest one to Calsters, just down the street. Uh, it'll connect over to the, the Golden One Center, the train station and into midtown and downtown Sacramento. There'll also be a line that goes south into the Bridge District, so you can easily access, uh, places like the barn and, and the other things that are going to be coming up in the Bridge District. The Ice Street Bridge Replacement Project, we call it the Sea Street Bridge, Sacramento calls it the Rail Yards Bridge. We'll settle our name eventually, but, uh, but that project is, is, uh, quite far along now. We're going through a design exercise to, uh, hopefully create something that's an iconic bridge, but still fits within the budget. Uh, so that's, uh, that's work that we're doing in partnership with the City of Sacramento. Uh, on our side of the river, there'll be the approaches that a lot of Calsters employees use, I, I, I would imagine, to get across the bridge. Uh, those will actually come down with the new bridge and that'll open up the entire riverfront for more development. So we're really excited about that project, both from a transportation and mobility standpoint, but also for land use development. And then the current bridge, the Ice Street Bridge Deck Conversion Project would tran- uh, transform the, the roadbed of the existing bridge to a, an amenity that's really just for bike and ped, uh, use. But also it creates an amenity that is very unique. It's, it'd be a place that you can be right on the river. We hope to amenitize it, uh, light it up. And on, uh, either the Sacramento side or our side, there'll also be an opportunity for plazas that could host events, that sort of thing. So we're, we're really excited about that project, which is currently in design. And then the project I mentioned that's right around you, um, is just finishing up at the next phase of that project. We actually have grant applications in, uh, local money dedicated to this project. So it would do a few things. The main point for Calsters is, is it would extend the Riverwalk Trail, which currently ends just to the north of your site, um, up through the Broderick Boat Ramp and, uh, into the neighborhood to the north. But also we would improve the pedestrian access across the railroad tracks. Right now it's, if you've ever walked it, it's not the most pedestrian inviting environment. Uh, we're going to be putting new safety gates, pavement, um, all the things that make it a better pedestrian environment and also new streetscape along Third and C, uh, to leverage what's happening in that, uh, part of the neighborhood as well. So this project, if we get all the funding together, would, would commence, uh, likely next year. And then most recently, we received a grant, uh, a significant grant to, uh, restore the Rayleigh's Dock. Uh, if you've been around long enough, you remember there was a, uh, a dock that used to be there that had a, a, a jetty that went out into the river. Uh, it went into disrepair, was eventually demolished, but the pilings are still there. And we have that local money dedicated, we have a, a one and a half million dollar, uh, state grant to actually build a new dock. And that project is being designed and will also be, uh, proceeding, uh, in twenty nineteen as well. And, uh, also recently, the California Indian Heritage Center, this was, uh, sort of dormant for a while, but in the state budget, there was a hundred million dollars dedicated to it. And, uh, we've been working with state parks on a, a really rapid plan now to get this project teed up for construction, taking advantage of that budget allocation. So these are old renderings, but I think what's, what's notable about this, if you just look in the background on every one of these photos, you can kind of see the point is, is made that the Calsters building and property is right in the middle of it all. There's over half a billion dollars of total investment that, uh, between us and, and, uh, the state are, uh, working towards just right outside your door here. So, um, I, you know, I'd like to attribute a hundred percent of that to the fact that the, the Calsters built its building here and, but it's, it's not far off though. It, it really, um, is our way of leveraging what has happened here and hoping to see more of it. So, um, and so again, I think, you know, uh, to stress the, uh, the amenities, I, 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 I fully understand that if you're looking downtown or here, uh, we're not quite at the point where we're able to match what downtown has. But again, it's, it's, it's midtown and downtown is our, our backyard. Um, meanwhile, on Third Street and along the riverfront, we're, um, highly amenitizing that area, area with, uh, new infrastructure, art, parks, uh, new housing and retail to, to match what we have in downtown. So this slide just shows the, the capacity that we have. We have over five thousand housing units of capacity, uh, to be built in the riverfront. Um, so really almost replicating what is in downtown Sacramento now. The slide at the bottom there was actually prepared a- as part of our package for the Amazon HQ two, uh, effort. And what it did is it really showcased that the Bridge District both has the capacity for it, but also if you look at it on par with other, uh, sites in the region, it, it really is the, the top site to accommodate a lot more office and mixed-use development. Um, but I would add Washington, this neighborhood here to that mix, uh, because you do have the riverfront sites that are very attractive for, uh, future office development. Um, and so like I mentioned, we're, we're, uh, we're investing over two hundred million dollars of local money, leveraging that with federal and state money on an overall package of half a billion dollars of investment just, just around you. Um, so, so obviously the, the second phase is, is critically important for us to continue that momentum. Uh, so I mentioned our, our preschool and, uh, early education program. So we call ours Learning Ladder. Um, it's hosted out of our community center, which is right across from City Hall. Um, it's a, uh, award-winning preschool program, uh, meets the high-quality standards, uh, that the county has set. And I think the opportunity here is as, as you contemplate the second phase and the childcare center on the ground floor, the city is interested in a partnership where we're looking to expand our program. Uh, we also want to address the, the, the need that there is in the community for infant care. Uh, both, I'm sure you, uh, from, uh, Calter- Calsters employees, you hear it, but also in the, in the broader downtown market, there's a tremendous need for that. Um, so we've been working with Calsters, we're, we're hoping to continue to work on that plan to, uh, potentially look at a partnership where the city would operate, um, that childcare center at the new building and expand our program. And then I'll close with, uh, a little bit of information on the Home Run Program. So this was a program that is, uh, was initiated by our mayor, Christopher Cabaldin, um, was backed up by West Sacramento voters in twenty sixteen where they, they, uh, approved a special tax initiative that among other things would fund the Home Run Program. So it starts, uh, obviously baseball's a theme, uh, with, with preschool and early education. Um, so the goal is to have, uh, e- every student, every, uh, preschool-eligible child in West Sacramento enrolled in preschool. Uh, but on top of that, the city is creating college savings accounts for anyone who, uh, who puts their child in preschool. They start with a college savings account and the, and the data shows that by, by doing that, it dramatically increases the likelihood that, that those students will go to college. Uh, second base, uh, is internships and digital badges. Uh, the city operates its own internship program, but we're working with community partners, uh, businesses in the community to offer, uh, paid internships for any, uh, West Sacramento-based high school or college student that wants them, uh, in the community. So we're, we're, uh, providing some funding for that effort as well. And then, and then third base is our College Promise Program, uh, which would offer free community college to every, um, high school student coming out of West Sacramento and as well as a, a, a small amount of scholarships, uh, for those students as well. And then of course, the idea of this whole program is the home run, is that we want everyone to go to college, but we also want them to think about coming back. So it combines college readiness, um, with internships, uh, connecting local youth to local businesses uh, with the idea that we're, we're really building a workforce here that matches what employers need, at the same time offering top-quality education and, uh, opportunities for all of our, all of our children in West Sacramento. So I'll close there and see if you have any questions. And, and again, thank you for having me today to talk about what we're doing.
There were some of us that attended the State of the City, right? State of the City, right? Um, and what you've described here is, is so much of what we heard that evening too. So I think, uh, West Sacramento has great vision. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. Paul, you had a question?
Yeah. Thank you very much. That was a great presentation and, uh, appreciate your coming. Um, I, my question is, it has to do with, with transit and you, you talked about the streetcar extension. Um, could you comment a little bit sort of about the, a little more about sort of the, the availability of parking downtown? Uh, or in this area, when the, when the streetcar might be operational? I think Harry had a question earlier about parking. I think it's a, it's a big issue. Um, you know, tho- for those of us who have or do work in, uh, uh, buildings downtown, uh, state buildings downtown, there's not always a parking garage there, so, um, what, what, what is the parking need? And, and if, if we were to reduce the parking that, that we're now planning for this building, would that, how would the city react and, and would there be the ability to, to create the mobility and transportation options for our, our employees?
Sure. So I think, uh, the way I'd answer that is the streetcar project is all about, uh, reducing parking demand. I think right now what you have is a mismatch between, uh, what the city's, you know, uh, long-term vision for reduced parking uh, demand is. We've actually lowered our standards quite a bit in the riverfront areas to, to protect that uh, versus what the market demand may be right now. So if you're in West Sacramento and you're building a building, streetcar isn't available yet. There are, there are some options, you know, we have the, the jump bikes and Via Service and some of the other, uh, uh, more individualized, uh, transportation options. But, um, until streetcar is available, we acknowledge, yeah, there's going to be a need for, for parking both, uh, down here. But, but that is the whole point of the project. We're, we're trying to change land use patterns so that the highest cost of a project is really the, the parking, especially if it's in a structured scenario. Um, so once streetcar is in place, uh, the hope and, and expectation is that, um, that demand will be tr- uh, significantly lower. And so new urban development will be, uh, able to underpark, uh, because of the availability of transit. What that means for Calsters right now, um, I think if you look at the, the build-out scenario that you're, you're looking at, and I, I can't remember off the top of my head what your opening date is for that building, it would generally match what we're projecting for the streetcar. Uh, now the streetcar project still needs to be bid out and we're, we're still, we still have a couple of hurdles to go through. Uh, but again, I, I think there's a good match between the timing of your building and the timing of that project. Um, so that while it may not compel you today to say, we're going to dramatically reduce our parking, um, know that, you know, that's what we're trying to do with, with urban development of, in the streetcar corridor is by providing the streetcar, reducing our parking standards, it allows projects to, uh, what may be seen by the market is underpark today with the expectation that that's coming.
So I, I guess my, my thought hearing that, and that's great to hear that the, that the streetcar project is that far along, that, um, while we may need parking today, uh, we're building a building for many years and it suggests that what, what our guest has said suggests that we might be building enough parking but for our immediate needs, but in a few years we'd find ourselves with an excess of parking space. And I'm wondering if there's a way to think about that and accommodate that, um, uh, temporary, you know, temporary parking or something like that, rather than having to build for thirty years at that cost, parking that we really only need for a much shorter period of time.
Yeah, and if I could on that, uh, one of our interests is leveraging existing parking facilities that are, that are already here. Uh, both what Calsters has built, what, uh, the Ziggurat Parking Garage has now. And I would also throw into that mix your, your second phase, the parking that you, you need today. As you said, you may not need in five years, ten years. But I can tell you that there is still a, 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 a major need for structured parking in the riverfront in general. Um, as we build smaller housing projects that, uh, we, we don't want them to park on a one-to-one per-unit basis. We want them to underpark, both to take advantage of the transit options, but also taking advantage of the parking assets that are available that could be leased for, uh, residential parking. Uh, so I would think about that as you, as you contemplate your second phase, uh, and also, uh, your, the, the one that you already built, um, as, as a long-term strategy to any, any excess capacity you have based on more employees using, um, transit, uh, to think about that as an asset that could be deployed within the neighborhood to accommodate some of the residential parking need that may not be here yet, but it's definitely on its way.
So I would just hope that we could, again, get a little bit more context on that.
Sure.
Lisa?
Yes.
Turn it back to you.
Okay.
Erin, thank you very much for coming and spending the morning with us.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
So even though it seems like it's.
I'm sorry. I, I have, Erin. Erin, go ahead.
Ms. Laurel, I'd like to also thank you for, uh, coming here today and, and sharing the vision for, uh, West Sacramento. From my perspective, uh, being a, um, community partner with the city is very, very important. It certainly is going to weigh into my thinking and deliberations as to how much it weighs, uh, ultimately my decision on the project. I, I want to commend you on the vision of the city. I look forward to seeing the transformation take place and the revitalization of this area of West Sacramento. And I especially want to applaud you and the architects of the, uh, grant, the, uh, the, 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 the project that's dealing with investing in children in, uh, preschool and then putting some resources behind it and seeing it all the way through college and the investment in human capital starting at birth is, uh, really the, I, from my perspective, um, the most significant investment anyone can make. most significant investment anyone can make, especially a city leader. So I wanted to applaud you for those efforts.
Uh, thank you. And I'll, I'll definitely pass that on to our city council and our mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa.
Okay, so it seems like-
Take us home.
It was a long time ago that we started here. But, um, the purpose of this presentation was really for JLL to provide their overall recommendations. So I'm going to hand it back over to Erin for her to finish up. So.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. All right. So, on the slide here is the assessment synopsis. So we looked at essentially every consideration that we modeled and, um, scenarioed out, out through here. So we have the costs outlined here against the qualitative assessment. Um, as you already know, the discounted cash flow comes in the lowest for the lease scenario, in the middle for the HQ and highest for the acquisition. We also layered in the average run rate, which is lowest for the HQ expansion, highest for the leasing scenario. Um, and then the third financial layer is the cost to achieve. How much does it cost, um, in the short term to achieve the new scenario, whichever one it will be, it would maybe. So the HQ expansion comes in the lowest at 474 million. This includes the initial cost to build, the rent and the OpEx per each scenario. And then the qualitative assessment comes in highest, again, for the HQ expansion at 4.6. And among the key considerations that we looked at and generalized for each one, um, the HQ expansion has the lowest cost to achieve, also has a proven location, parity in environment and experience, and the ability to maintain current standards as well as income potential. The acquisition scenario has the highest, uh, discounted cash flow, highest cost to achieve, does have branding opportunity and income potential, but there's also significant business disruption, an unproven location and uncertain availability. Likewise, the leasing scenario also has uncertain availability and unproven location and business disruption. There is a lack of control here as well. Um, it has the lowest discounted cash flow and the highest run rate. So ultimately, um, with full objective considerations to the studies that we've conducted, looking at both the financial modeling and the qualitative assessment, we are recommending that Calsters proceeds with the HQ expansion of their existing headquarters for future office occupancy. We acknowledge that while the headquarters expansion scenario does have the second highest net present value, the nominal cash flow is the lowest among the three scenarios. Likewise, the headquarters expansion does provide the highest qualitative value for Calsters from an operational, experience, flexibility and risk perspective. And I will underscore again that that qualitative assessment ultimately impacts the operational efficiencies and Calsters getting to their mission and objectives for the members and beneficiaries. And for Calsters to retain the competitive position that it has reached, it's critical that the workplace environment and experience are given adequate consideration in the future real estate strategy. And Calsters' current headquarters has already prioritized these elements, which has likewise benefited the membership and the community as well as the workforce. So lastly, it's imperative that the future real estate strategy continues to embody these features that Calsters has already promoted in its existing occupancy to continue securing the financial future and sustaining the trust of California's educators. Thank you.
So I've got a good list of everything you've, you've said today, just so you know. So you don't have to go through that again. I wrote down about eight things I thought that, that you all have identified. And, you know, I'm hoping we can agree that we, we don't need to be repetitive in the next meeting, that we assume we've got a building blocks of information, so we don't have to bring a whole cast of, um, consultants and everything each time to do that and just kind of narrow the focus to at least the eight things that I heard you all identify, two of which require some pretty intensive work, for sure. The, the additional financial analyses and, uh, simulating another approach, those do take some work and we'll huddle after the meeting today and know if we can get it done or not by then.
So Jack, you've covered two of the eight. Can you just remind us of the other six?
Oh, sure. Sure, 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 sure.
Please.
Well, some were just specific questions, but, uh, um, then again, on the analysis side, we will, uh, be providing a, uh, at least two bond analysis of, uh, of an acquisition and a, um, build strategy. One could be tax-exempt and one may be taxable bonds. And again, that's why we didn't want to get too stuck on-
Right.
-the numbers today. We were going to model, um, the idea of doing a 10-year lease and then building a facility. So those are the, the heavier ones. We'll delve into the parking issues a little bit deeper with you and kind of some benchmarking. And also, we'll query the architects a little bit on what would happen if we lopped off a floor or two and how does that affect the cost structure and gave everybody a bicycle and, or, or-
Let's go to the Netherlands.
I don't know. Yeah, everybody gets hired, we give them a bike. I don't know. Yeah, Netherlands, Netherlands model. Yeah. So, anyway, we'll, 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 um, do that. Well, Paul, let us- There's some specific benchmarking questions and we'll look at what DGs, what Jacqueline mentioned around some of the state, uh, data that she's got to bring that in and, uh, look at the comparison and sizing to office space, dollars per square foot for building and that type of stuff. Um, we'll do a little deeper dive around ZNE and what specifically the governor's executive order does or doesn't entail and maybe some views around that. Uh, we'll do a sensitivity analysis around the residual value and then we have a specific question around the timing of when, uh, Calsters occupies at least 50% of the space. So that's, that was the eight things that I wrote down.
Thanks, Jack.
Did I miss anybody's comments?
Is there anything else that we need to-
It's okay.
Add to that list?
So we'll focus on those. Again, the two tough ones, I'll give you an up, we'll give you an update on the, um, on the progress of those analyses so you kind of can get an early glimpse of whether we can get that done or not by November. And so, okay?
Paul?
Yeah, thanks. I, just to say, I don't think this tax exempt, the, the bond analysis will take very long at all. It's a, it's an extremely simple thing to do. It's just that we've got to have the, the right per, I mean, that's the kind of thing I used to do. It would, it would take me a few hours to do it. So it's not that big of a deal.
Great. I love it.
You just have to get the right person to do it.
It's just the ability to procure the person to do it through our process.
Our procurement is not, our process is not quick.
Hopefully we'll get that done then sooner. That'd be, uh, that'd be wonderful. We can at least tightly wrap it for you for November, then you can decide if you've got enough information or not to move forward. Uh, if you don't, we'll make sure we have a budget figure available for you at the meeting to understand what we'd have to change our budget.
Okay.
If we have to continue, uh, a relationship with our business partners.
All righty.
Sure. That was my only addition, Jack, is it just seems like having a clear sense of what are the implications for if, you know, if we decide to move the decision to-
Right.
-later, what are the financial implications and, you know, just sort of, how does that impact kind of-
Right.
Yeah.
Also, I don't, I don't want to keep wearing you out with this being the centerpiece of every board meeting, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of other bigger issues than this to tackle.
It's important and, uh, we'll take the time it takes to, to make the decision.
The last thing I'd like to say too is the supplemental language that went over to the legislature on August 15th. There has been some changes to the net present value, um, analysis that we've done and some other changes regarding, uh, square footage. So I just want to make you all aware that we are planning on doing a summary letter of changes to the legislature to make sure that the information that has been presented to you today is the same information that we've provided them as well. Because it was kind of a, a rush to get that finished by August 15th because we had originally had a date of October 1st and they asked for it prior. And so we just, and Joyce Lynn and her team are, are, are doing a great job of helping us keep track of those changes so that way we can make sure we update them as well.
And I would think that now that we, you know, we've kind of looked at expanding the scenarios a little bit-
Exactly.
Exactly.
And that type of thing, that we bring some updates to that report also.
Right.
Yeah, because they'll, they'll see the numbers are so much different.
So different, yeah.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? All right, we'll go to the public. Hi, Dave.
Thank you. Dave Walrath, representing California Retired Teachers Association. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Uh, we had sent you a letter, uh, raising some questions about, uh, some of the assumptions that were used in the report to the supplemental language report. Uh, we urge you, uh, in, I won't go through in detail on that, but in conclusion of the letter, what we are urging is that before you make a really final, final decision, you avail yourself of the offer made by the Department of Finance to have DOF take a thorough review and respond with an analysis. And that you also do the same thing that was done for this building, that there be a budget subcommittee hearing process on what you're doing and how it's being done, uh, to ensure that the legislature is fully aware and cognizant of the decision. So you're informed by their thoughts as well before you make the final, final decision on what option you do intend to adopt. That does not mean you bring them five. What we would envision is that you're bringing one, but that you may modify that one after receiving that analysis and being informed of some of the legislature's thoughts. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jennifer Baker, California Teachers Association. Wanted to thank the board for, uh, their very thoughtful comments. Uh, we know that this is a long process. Uh, we have been trying to work to help to educate our members on this issue and this does continue to be a very sensitive issue because of the optics and the myriad of other issues that our members are facing. So when we raise this, um, it's, uh, typically not regarded in a positive light. And so we continue to ask, uh, for materials that help to, um, better explain those optic issues. Uh, the sooner we get those materials that we can share with our membership, the easier it's going to be. So we're still waiting to get that. Uh, we also look forward to hearing about a comprehensive plan, um, regarding communicating any potential negative fallout, uh, from the optics so that we are reassured that you're ready to deal with any of those issues so that it won't have unanticipated, um, impacts on stakeholder organizations and the work that we have to do. And thank you for, uh, for taking the time to listen and we look forward to seeing where these conversations are going to go.
Thank you, Jennifer. All righty. Um, this was the biggest thing we had on our agenda today. I really didn't want to cut off debate. And as it was, I have to thank the board for holding the questions, um, during the second half of the presentation. Um, we are now two hours behind schedule. So Harvey, guess what? I think we're going to ask you to do our fiduciary training at a later date. Are you okay with that?
Right.
I knew you would be. I knew you would be. And then what I'd like to do is I would like to have a working lunch and that we would have, um, items 17, 18, and 19. Uh, we could do, we could do our final closed session, I think, pretty much. I don't know if we, we don't have any closed session from appeals. Do we have any closed session from the investment committee that we have to?
No, I don't think we have. Brian, we don't have anything to report out of close from yesterday, do we? Yeah.
Okay. Then I, what I would like to do is take items 15 through 19, our closed session items that we have scheduled for the end of the day. I'd like to do that at lunch. I'd like to do that all within a half an hour, um, which means we have to be really efficient. And I hope that gives everybody out there enough time to do lunch also. But I want to try to get closer to our original ending time, if at all possible. All right. Are there any comments or objections to that?
Dana, so we're having a working lunch.
We're having a working lunch.
Thank you.